Lord, thank you for today and the opportunity to come together again to conduct the business of this district. Please bless us and all that we thank and we say and do to the Baptist District and glory to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
To your current board of the American flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag, honor in the Texas way, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one individual.
There you go. I didn't see anybody sign up to talk while ago, has that changed? You don't want to sign up to talk?
Thank you all you guests for coming to see us tonight. I mean, wild and exciting. Y'all came the right night.
Information items, 4A. Okay, any questions on the county's paper? We've had opportunity to look over that. If not, want to report on our cleanup day that we had that was on December the 9th. And, you know, a big turnout to our student body. We had, right at 100 kids show up on that Saturday morning. Quite chilly Saturday morning, by the way. But the kids did a lot of work as far as cleanup in the community, along the roads. Also did a lot of cleanup with some homes, some yards, as far as raking leaves, cutting trees and tree limbs and hauling them off and did some carpentry work on some homes. So had a great turnout. Again, I appreciate the help of all of the area churches that we invited and got together with and put together a list of names that needed some assistance. So our churches were a big help in that and we appreciate that.
There's a letter going around. That one hasn't gotten very far yet. Thank you later for the participation, cooperation.
And Grace, that has helped with furnished some of the food and all. So we fed all the kids up here. We cooked almost 300 tacos. So plenty of food, plenty of food for them. It was good. It worked out real well. We almost finished at lunchtime, but ended up doing a little more workout for lunch. So you had a good, good response from the community. Yes, that's one thing you learned that we received, but a lot of good comments from the community members regarding our kids going out and helping in the community. So hopefully we do. And that's just one of the things that they'll be involved in this year. So we appreciate all the work they did there. The next thing I would like to do is recognize someone. I have on here is student recognition. And I'd like to take the time just to recognize one student tonight. A lot of times we recognize a lot of students, but as far as groups. But tonight we have with us, I asked Coach Sharp if we could get Kobe Renfro up here. And Kobe, if you do not know, Kobe was one of our players, football players this year that was selected to first team all district and also selected to first team all state. And he was the top defensive player in the state in Class 3A. So I would like to recognize Kobe for that. That is a great accomplishment and we're proud of him.
It's outstanding. Now read the stats behind that. One other award that we found out recent, that's the United States Award. So, but yes, he was a 3A Defensive Player of the Year. There's only six chosen in the entire state from 1A to 6A. He's one of them. This is not a local award that's chosen by local sports people or any of us involved in it as football coaches. This was chosen by, I don't want to misread it here, but the Texas Association of Press sports writers in the entire state. So they look at all the stats that come in. This is based on regular 10-game stats. And so he had 191 tackles, four sacks, five forced fumbles, three fumble recoveries, 20 tackles for loss behind line of scrimmage, and two pass breakups. You know, kind of that barrier you look at is 100 tackle a year, he had almost 200. That is amazing. That's just unheard of usually. And then we found out after that award, what happens is, you know, the USA Today News publication, national paper looks at all the state, all-state selections. And Kobe also was selected second-team USA team for those accomplishments. So that is, never had players here that I can recall from the research that I did to accomplish either of those. We've had all-state players, but not the player in the states. And he's only a junior and we got him back another year.
Kobe was proud of you. Not only was it those honors, especially the way you were represented in your team and your school while you were out there on the field. If y'all did not get to see Kobe play, you miss him because it was fun watching him play. You could tell he enjoyed it out there. You know, he was on the delivering end of all of it, of course, but that's why he enjoyed it. But he had a good time. He represents, he's a first-class young man. And thank you parents for that.
Yes, we thank you all.
It, I would say that it was fun watching him play and we certainly look forward to next year. But congratulations. Okay, with that, we can move into the consent items.
As our practice, unless somebody has something they want to remove from the consent items, we'll do them all at once. You got an extra fun mark out there. Anything to move off? All right, then we get a motion to pass the consent items to the group? Paul, you get a second? Patty, you get a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Ananamous? All right, discussion items, 6A.
Okay, looking at our March Board meeting, it falls during the week of spring break. So generally, we moved it to the next Monday. I just wanted to see if that's what y'all want to do with this, with this board meeting this year. I would say either move it up a week or move it later in the week, in the month. But if you do it March 5th, you won't, we won't have all of our financials in by that day. We move it to March 19th and we should have everything in by then. So March 19th.
Anybody opposed to the 19th? Everybody good with the 19th?
I also think it'd be two weeks for spring break. Recordize to do that.
Okay, so 19th, we'll look at the 19th. Okay, the next thing is the Texas Pioneer Foundation funding grant. If you remember when we started our Salina ISD Foundation, as a district, we helped out. We put in, put up the startup money, of course, to help get it going because it is going to benefit the classroom and the kids and the teachers. And in doing that, we discussed, okay, there's a grant opportunity that that money may be coming back to us, to the district, to the foundation, or whatever it may be. We did apply for that grant. We did receive that grant. That grant is for $15,500. And I'm just kind of needing to know what the board wants to do as far as, that grant, of course, belongs to the foundation, the Salina ISD Foundation. So it can either be used by the foundation, if this board so chooses, used by the foundation to put back in the classroom. Or this board can say, oh, reimburse us and put it in the general fund. So, you know, whatever. Normally, a board, in doing the research, normally what's going to happen is it's left in the foundation to be put in the classroom, but that's totally up to the board. I need direction on y'all to get with the foundation board on what, what to do.
Was this just a loan that we gave them? I mean, once we gave it to them, wasn't it theirs?
Yeah, yeah.
And now this grant is to them. So I don't see that we really have a dog in the fight here.
Well, when we first put up the money, they were not an organization, if you remember. That was when we started. So that's the technical part of it. So we're calling $15,500.
It's basically, do we want to, and I use the word demand. We want to demand reimbursement or use it for the classroom, just call them to speak classrooms regardless, either way. Anyway, let them use it as they see fit, or we need it back so we can do it as we see fit.
Who do you want to decide to do this? Because we could put it right back in the classrooms ourselves.
But I personally, I'm all good with letting them do it the way they do it. Let the foundation do what they're doing. And if anybody doesn't have a problem with that, then we can move forward further. Do we need to have a vote on it?
No, there's no vote on this. I just need direction on that.
Let the foundation keep the 15 and put it down as they see fit. I don't see anybody opposed to that.
Okay, then we'll, in fact, they're, they scheduled the meeting the same night as this one tonight. So we're missing it. But I'll get with it and see tomorrow on that. Okay, the next item is just the report on the goals. Do you recall, we went over that in detail a few months ago. Just want to give an update on some of those, some of the areas. On the vertical teaming, we did all of our projections as far as the meetings go. There's been one meeting that was, that had to be postponed because we had a PBMAS meeting that same day, which is, deals with our special education. So one of those meetings is, has been moved from November 14th to January 25th. And then the next one is going to be February 20th. But anyway, on the schedule with that. On the technology in the classrooms, we have 18 people going to the TCA conference, which is the big technology conference in Austin. They're going February the 6th. And 18 is, is quite a few teachers.
What about last year?
Last year, how many went last year to Ball Park, you know? It wasn't, wasn't?
I wouldn't even dozen, yeah. I think it was less than a dozen last year.
So we're sending 18 this year. And it is, it's a premier conference for technology. So we expect a lot of good things to come from it. And also, I've already let them know that if they are going to go to this conference, then they need to plan on, when they get back, they will be asked to do a workshop to the other staff members regarding information that they learned there. Whether it be a new gadget, toy, whatever, or new program, or whatever it may be. Their assignment will be bring it back and do a workshop to the rest of our teachers. So I want everybody to be able to gain from this workshop, even though we can't send everyone. But we are, we are extremely excited about sending 18 to that conference. So we expect good things from that. On the facilities plan, I put that in the packet, I believe. What I did from our last discussion was kind of separate some of the items. We had a long list. I separated some of the items that belong on a facilities plan compared to items that belong on a maintenance list. And what I'm handing out now is basically the items that we put on the maintenance list. And those are being attacked in a different manner because those are going to be, coming from regular budgeted items. We will, this, these items will be included in the budget process for this coming year. The ones that can't be addressed at this time. But if there are any items on that maintenance list that become too large of a budgetary item, then we would come to you because I want those items to be on the facilities plan list. Because the facilities plan list, as you can see, are the large-ticket items and items that are long-range plans. So those are separated for you. Last time you saw that, it was all put together, but it's separated so it's easier to work with and easier to address those, those goals and those needs. Were there any questions on the facility plan, as you saw in your packet? Because later on in the meeting, I'm going to ask y'all to take action on it. So it officially becomes your facilities plan. And then the, the other goal that we had is to continue developing the Education Foundation. And as y'all know, that's up and going very well. At this point, the foundation has a little over $80,000 in the bank. So the goal for this year was $100,000. And so I do believe that the foundation is going to reach their $100,000 goal before the year's out.
So. Just heads up, because I just know there's people in here that aren't aware, maybe. One of the things that's happening right now is that we are addressing people who would like to be a founding donor. There's people, I mean, my family, one of them, we're four or five generations of it, it's been. And there's people, families are same way. They've got two, three, four generations of families. And we're sending out letters to say, we thought of you as possibly wanting to be a founding donor. There's three different levels that you can participate. If you would like to be a founding donor, here's the packet with all the information, all the materials. If you think of somebody, or if you personally want to be a founding donor to the Education Foundation, or maybe think of somebody that maybe hasn't been thought of yet, we have packets that can be sent to them and we'll get them out of packet. I'll have my name on it or somebody. One of the members of the board will sign it and say, hey, we thought of you and thought you might be interested. If you like to, I said, well, Rodney Davis, because I just figured he'd be somebody that probably liked to participate. You know, he's not, he's not here anymore, so he didn't get to know what was going on. But people that are not necessarily here, but have long roots here. So, just a heads up.
And also, there will be a foundation donor dinner, luncheon. That will be January the 23rd. And all board members are invited to that luncheon. It will be at Grace Baptist Church, 12 o'clock. And also, we've sent letters out to many of our vendors that we use in the district to see if they are interested in helping out with the foundation. So that luncheon will be at noon, January 23rd, at Grace Baptist Church. And I will send you all more information on that as reminders. Anyone sitting out there in the audience is welcome to attend also.
So you sent all the board members that same packet? We're talking about the, the download packet?
No.
Not because you were a board member then. But I have three of them.
I would think that you probably just go ahead and send the past board members.
Yes.
Present board member.
Yeah, but what we're working on is the list of who needs a letter. Because every board member on the Education Foundation came back with a list. And a lot of those kind of people were covered because of that. But there are also people that weren't because their kids are grown and gone and they're not necessarily involved in the district anymore.
So yes, all y'all will be receiving them. They probably put your name on there twice tonight. I'll give twice. But it's a good opportunity to help the kids out and help the teachers out. And we're, we're really excited about how far it has gone so far. So like I said, the goal was, was 100,000. And being over 80,000 at this point in the school year, I think is really good. So we're excited about that. The fifth thing is to continue to demolish the old elementary building and prepare for future use. I talked to the company again today and they think that they may be wrapping up this week. We have the, the well site that's going to be plugged. And if they can get the cooperation of the weather, then that would help a great deal. But, you know, I know y'all will be out there to see the progress on that. And again, they are almost done. It's looking good. It's looking really good. If we can get it dry enough to put all the topsoil on, it'd be even better. So as far as getting started on future use, that's something we'll look at tonight. And that will be up to the board as far as taking action on that.
Have you already taken a view of the water in the well?
Quotes.
Quotes.
No, I mean, we have some that have given us quotes. We're still looking at some others. So if there's others out there.
Well, I mean, I thought, I don't have to visit and see. We might just do it. There's a possibility of money still. I haven't really thought about it. Where's the thought that, you know, we could do it at cost, but I wouldn't want to listen to any backlash in the community about it.
Sure.
So I kept her name out of it, maybe.
One of that.
If we found any data on that well or wanting, we have them. So maybe you can discuss it. We may have to figure out what the cost is and maybe stick it in those, know what their cost is.
Very good. We might see that.
We'll see.
Yeah, yeah.
Just trying to keep everything.
I understand. I understand. But yeah, the donation part of it, yeah, that, that would be a definite possibility. And I can tell you more details about what we found out about that. Okay, the, well, I've already covered the, the community work that we've done. We will have another one scheduled before the end of basketball season. So that's, I don't want to go over there.
I haven't played on that yet.
On which one?
The next community. I didn't cook this house. Is that a tale?
Hey, it was okay. It worked out well. It worked out well. I did burn some of the weed. He said, that was over.
You cheated and just took a laundry's house for a road smoker.
Said our cook wasn't here, so. So anyway, no, it all worked out well. Okay, any questions on that, that portion of the goals, talking about the goals? Just thank you for your hard work on it. Appreciate it. We're, we're, we're getting there on all those goals. It's, it's working out really, really well. Okay, if nothing else, then we will look at action items.
7A, public fund investment act review policies.
The first two items, these items are the same ones that we do each year in January. The board is required to annually review the investment policies of the district. And then there's a resolution that the board adopts wherein they say, they say what our investment policies and strategies are, that they're going to be, that they've been reviewed and adopted with no changes. You appoint the superintendent and director of business operations, that's two investment officers. And, and that's basically the resolution. Attached in the board packet, your information, the investment policies that we have, the legal policy and the local policy, changes that were made to those, or those required by legislation that was passed during this legislation. So that's why they're different than the ones that we had last year. We'd like to answer any questions. Our recommendation would be the board would approve the resolution that's contained in the board packet at this time.
Do we have to have two-year promotions to approve the policies as presented and provide training as requested?
There are two, there are five.
We need two-year from them. Okay, so after his recommendation, I need a motion to approve the policy that's presented. Danny, you get a second? Paul, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, and then we need a recommendation to have them go to train as necessary as pursued in the packet. Motion, Patty, the second? Danny? Patty, Danny? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, expand bond funds.
Okay, the, the next one is, you know, when we had the elementary school built, we had the ground built out there and we had the, oh, the, what do you call that? Mulch, I guess you would call it, in the playground area where the kids are. So, you know, we put that out there on the playgrounds and it needs more because it packs down, packs down. And we've taken, gotten quotes on that. And we're, what we'd like to do is go ahead and add more mulch to those playground areas for the safety of those kids because it's packed, extremely packed. And this falls under the area where this board can decide to go ahead and use some of the bond money that was left, as long as it's used strictly on elementary. That can be done. So that would be the recommendation is to use existing bond money to add more mulch to the playground areas at the elementary school. And I believe it was $8,279. So my recommendation would be go ahead and approve the funds, using the funds from the bond issued to add more mulch to the playground.
Make some recommendations, get a motion? Patty, you get a second? I'm good. You're good. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Long-range facility plans.
Okay, and that's simply what I was talking about earlier that I showed you. It's in the packet. I have a copy here also if you need it. But on those, that's what we all discussed, put together. And then I separated the long-range plans so it would be simpler for us to look at knocking those items out throughout, well, during the future. But I would like the board simply to take action on that just so that we become your working document for long-range facility plans.
I do have a question regarding, is this in any specific order?
Oh, no. Prioritize.
That's later day.
Yeah.
To be prioritized on a later day.
Yes, yes, yes. Because what I will do, we're in the process now, and I have lots of numbers on some of those items.
As I said, we have different levels of.
Yes, because we're in the process of getting numbers on a cost on these items. When I get costs on these items, estimated costs, then I will bring that to you so that you can prioritize these, these things.
Yeah, does it mean that's?
Yeah, definitely no, no order on this list.
Make sure that's clear. This is not in order of importance. Although softball is number one.
All right, so. So it would be my recommendation to approve the long-range facility plans.
Okay, so I'd like to get a motion, make some recommendation to approve the long-range facility plans as listed to be prioritized with more information. Are you good with that, Patty? Danny, any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Dance softball. Okay, the last thing is, as we talked about the demolition of the old elementary school at that site, about the use for that. Basically, before I go any further, I would, if, if it's the, the wish of the board to look at the process of putting a softball field over there at that location, then I would need approval from the board to go ahead and open up the bidding process to get some pricings from different companies on construction of softball fields. And of course, what we will do is come back to you on prices, you know, and that kind of thing. of thing, and what you, what we may want in there, may not want in there. And there, there are ways that we can, can cut some costs and still have a really, really good facility out there, and we'll discuss those things. But before I can get any pricing, I will need approval from the board to go ahead and put that out for bids.
So recommendation?
Is to approve as to begin the bidding process for the softball field.
Can I get a motion for that? Danny? You get a second? Paul, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. One thing, does this need to be, because this was part of the facility?
No. Yeah, I had to prove this place. You know, we had talked about security, and we got quotes on some security measures we wanted to see upgraded at the high school and middle school, and there's a lot of information there. So that's why I put that at your place for you to take home, go through that, and that will be on the agenda next board meeting for us to discuss. If there are three different options there to look at.
Two are particularly cameras, one of them is locks and garden entries, but either or any combination of them, but just know that was part of the facility plan that will be on next agenda.
And that way, you'll have plenty of time to look over prior to our next meeting.
Is there any particular recommendation?
Not yet. All right, so we have done everything on the agenda for open session. We are going to move into closed session at 7:01.
Thank you for inviting.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good sir. I didn't see one of those Cadillac playing up here.
Even the first plane doesn't have anything to do with locks. There's a lock, is a.